Are you all here about the annexation? I assume. Are you the lady that I talked to on the phone?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the lady who called me on the phone, I tried to explain to her that the annexation isn't on the agenda. And that it will be next year before we even talk about it. And, uh...I mean, that's where we are with it. I'm the only one who's talked about it.
So there's nothing gonna be said about this evening then?
No, I mean, we didn't plan to talk about it at all. And I told her that two or three times. I said, "Now, we're..." I said, "It's not...you'll have plenty of time. We'll have community meetings. We'll have all kinds of stuff about it." Because there's lots of questions about it. And if you...whether you're for it or not, I mean, that's all right. But there'll still be questions about it one way or the other. And we'll try to answer all them when the time comes. But we...she was asking me where we were gonna annex. I said, "We haven't looked at it."
One question is, why do you want to?
Well, I'll answer that one question for you.
Okay.
And I tried to explain to her. The only way the town's ever gonna grow is through the expansion of our electrical system. That's it. So where we are right now, if we don't ever have any more business and our expenses get higher, and they will with wages and the costs of things, we have to have some way to meet our expenses. And a certain amount of the money in the electrical department goes into the general fund because we do not have enough sales tax enabled to support the town. Like a Branson or probably even...I don't know about Forsyth. So our money has to come from somewhere, and that's where it comes from. So what we're looking at is...and I'll use it as an example, and that's Dr. Harland's farm. Fifty years from now, there may be houses on that farm. Rosemary and Dick probably won't hang on to it. You know, they both live away from here. So that's what we're looking at. So where...there isn't any way we make money with annexation. In other words, we don't have any city tax on land, on property. Whatever tax you're paying to the counties, that's it. If you're on White River, you stay on...I'm on White River here in town. If you're on White River, you stay on White River. Uh...it'd be years before utilities could be run out there too. It's sewer and water because it's gonna...we had to have a bond issue to do that. That takes millions of dollars to do that. And, I mean, it's a...so why are we doing it? That's why. And so that someday, somebody will be glad we did it. We're not gonna be glad now because all the roads that we take in from annexation, we're gonna have to maintain. If it's a county road, we'll have to take it in, and we'll maintain it. So we're gonna have some extra expenses. And we're not gonna gain any money from it at all. Unlike maybe Seymour, you know, as you go to Springfield, it's Seymour and Fortland and all of them expand. They're not...they're doing the same thing for the same reason, along with protecting their turf from the town next to them. You know, Rogersville went way out to keep Springfield from encroaching. Fortland's gone way out to keep Rogersville. And I don't know how far it is across Seymour. Gee whiz, it's...
Eight or 10 miles.
Yeah, but that's all it's behind it. Nothing else behind it but that. And in any way in the world, the city's gonna gain a dime from it. If there's a new house built, we'll supply the electricity. That's it. And the house is out by the country club, for example. If we'd have been out there, we'd have had all those utilities. And the boundary's not uniform either. I mean, it just goes, you know, everywhere. That's the reason. That's it. So we'll have plenty of time to talk about it. And plenty of time to be for it, and plenty of time to be against it. You know, whatever we wanna do. And zoning and planning, we've got maps in there. Zoning and planning hadn't even looked at the maps. And there's seven people on that board, so a lot of talking and a lot of work would go into deciding what you wanna do before you ever did anything. We don't even...I'm not sure how we'd do it.
Well, it'd probably be a vote. Probably.
Yeah, probably. On a ballot. So that's it. And I promise you, and you can tell...I say, "Young lady," about all of them I talked to are younger, so... that there'll be plenty of time, you know. I mean, there'll be things in the paper, there'll be things on the radio. We'll...there'll be lots of talking about it. But we're not ready to do that. We're not in the new city all yet. So we've got lots to do to keep us busy. But I promise you, there'll be lots of discussion about it. There won't be something happening, and you wake up someday and find out that you didn't have to say so. That will not happen. I guarantee you.
You do?
Okay? And I'm sorry you came. I told her two or three times. I said, "It's just not..."
It wasn't me. I promise you.
You're the only woman. No, it wasn't you. So anyway, that's...
Probably the girl Casey, but yeah.
Thank you for your time.
But thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Me neither. Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Thank you.
Administrative director.
You have in your packet financial reports at the end of September. And it was kinda odd that the report looks wonderful at the end of September. We had right at 2.1 million. The problem was that the very next day was print check day, and we ended up spending several hundred thousand. We had the paving come through.
The paving came through.
And I think 50,000 on the part of the project up here.
We haven't paid for the car yet.
We haven't paid for the car yet. So it dropped dramatically, like just within about 12 hours of that report. But I ran it this afternoon, and we are back up to about 1.8 million. We've had a lot of utility payments come in. So so far, we're still not quite as bad as that next day was. We all had a few heart palpitations, but we're backing up a little bit. And it'll continue to fluctuate back and forth, but so far, everything's good.
In regard to this resolution that we're getting ready to do in regard to Max and that house, I did talk to Clint...what's Mrs. Sanders' name? Sharon? And she's known all along that they were gonna get that house, that Max was gonna give them that house. The problem she's got is that she's not real sure what they're gonna do with it after they get it because it needs a little bit of work. And the library didn't have the money to fix it up, so, you know.
The museum?
Yeah, the museum. Yeah. Talking about the house on the east end of that lot.
So they're thinking about possibly using it for an income, and possibly?
Well, I think it's too good to tear down. But, you know, there are indeed probably five or $6,000 to do the work on it. Anyway, I talked to her about it, and she knows they're gonna get it. So that's what this resolution is.
We're just gonna put it in our name, so if it comes back, it'll come back to the city.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what Max wanted, so everybody's happy.
Yeah. Max needs to...Max can give it to us, and we can give it to the museum. And that's...that way, Max...that takes care of Max, and then we give it to the museum. And they've known all along that we're gonna get it.
Looks like they could spend a little money on it. I mean, there's been people living in it.
Yeah.
Looks like they could spend a little money on it, maybe rent it out and get some income for it in the museum.
Yeah, they have to...Max had wanted to spend some money on it probably three, four years ago, and got it.
Not quite the work.
Fixed up a little bit where they could... Well, I have a cash flow. I have...I haven't been in it, but we knew. I know one time it had a fire several years ago. Suzanne, you're in.
Resolution number 2015-1012. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and the clerk to attach signing the documents for the acceptance of property owned by Max and Linda Murphy.
And a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, along favorably. Fine. I think I've talked most of you about it. I had a call from Jim Brown at recycling. And Jim was upset. They had just dumped the styrofoam in the trash on his...over there. And, I mean, he was kinda grumpy with me, but he really wasn't upset with me. He was upset about the stuff that's been done. And he says, "My board wants a fence." I didn't hear him first time. I asked him again. "My board wants a fence." And I said, "Well, all the way across, you're talking about?" "Yeah." So, um...I talked to him about cameras. We talked a little bit about having someone on duty. And evidently, the stuff was dumped during the daytime. So if someone had been on duty, we might have prevented it. And he asked for no help from us at all. He just wanted me to know whether they're gonna put a fence up. The next day, Jerry North came over to count the tires and informed me that they'd already applied for a grant for the fence with South Central Solid Waste Management. So I don't know...he just said it was expensive, and that's all I know about it. So, you know, I don't know how that will work. But it's gonna be tough if we have trash dumped in our street. So we'll address that if it happens. You know, I had mentioned to them more than once that we might put a dumpster out there for them, you know, free of charge, unchargeable. But they've never asked for the dumpster, so...
So this fence, if I go down there with my little milk bottles, plastic in my papers, I don't dump until somebody lets me in or what?
Well, I don't know what he's gonna do. I know, I think...my impression is, at the end of the day, 5:00, they're gonna lock her up.
Be closed.
And probably be closed all day Saturday and Sunday. And that won't cure that unless they have somebody there for the day, though, I don't think. I mean, you're gonna...that's all I know about it, so it's actually... We'll wait and see.
Well, they've talked about fence down there before.
I just don't think that...the fence may prevent the dumping of some stuff inside where this was dumped, but it will not make it look even better.
No.
I went out with David Davidson and Andy Daniels, surveyor. And we've got a pretty good section on the, I'll say, the southeast side of that runway that's gonna have to have more trees taken out. And I called Jerry. And so Jerry...when Jerry comes this time, I'll go out there with David. I'll go out there with Andy. And we will get every tree and shrub that needs to be taken out. After you get all that out, and you stood there, and you looked all the way up, and boy, it looks nice. And I think I told you Ronnie Norman's got six trees up there that're gonna have to be topped in his yard. Or trimmed. Topped. And he's okay with that, as long as we don't destroy his trees. But I thought we'll wait until Jerry can do his part, and we get that part done, and then we'll worry about Ronnie after that. You can't see the trees in Ronnie's yard until all the other trees were gone. Then when you stand under that field and you realize they're in Ronnie's yard, they're really plain. There's some kind, and I don't know what it is, depending on your elevation, you can only have trees that are so tall, but maybe it's 45 feet here, or maybe it's 60 feet here. Stan probably knows, but anyway, that's kinda the way they do that.
It changes 20...is it 25 feet every 100 feet out?
I'm not gonna say.
It's either 20 or 25 feet every 100 feet.
There's a formula they use.
Every 100 feet it goes out from there, or it comes up 20 or 25.
And I know every time he moved, the elevation changed whether or not you hit the top of the tree. So we do have...oh, maybe three or four that'll have to be cut with a chainsaw. Maybe up against the fence, and up in the other corner, there are three that'll have to...we can take out.
I don't really need...
We probably wouldn't hurt Stan sometimes down there to go with David and look and see if there's anything of any value in that. Yeah, or if it's just gonna be good wood to burn or...
It just looked to me like it's about the same as what he was saying.
Well, I think so, but I think we better... 'cause Fay may...she may ask. I haven't told her. I haven't even talked to her back, 'cause she's not gonna care.
Maybe those three trees we need to cut up in that corner, and I know where you're talking there, right against that fence, maybe someone don't wanna do that just with the wood.
Yeah. Jimmy Johnson got in there and cut a bunch of wood, and it disappeared. Went out there to get it, and it was gone. The airport card reader. This letter we got out there was disassembled. Ray took it apart. And then there was some question about whether or not we oughta have a certified person put it back together since it involved... It wasn't just a normal hook-up. So as far as I know, he's not giving us a bid, has he?
Who?
The guy who was...
No, Jimmy and Ron, Dan.
Uh, that was...we thought we'd get it yesterday. But the other bid was 3,000. So...but we've got to have the reader, we've got gas in the tank. So that's coming. And you've got a sheet in there in regard to a maintenance contract on it. Got about four different... Yeah, keep here. And what...yeah, there you go. And what David suggests is the platinum level, the best level for the first year. We get all put together and see how it works, and see if we're having any trouble with it. If we do, it's gonna cover most of what we have to do. And then we can adjust the level of service after that. And that's something, unless we have an objection, that's something I can do. Whenever we get the reader in, I can just give David the go-ahead on that.
They've got everything else done out there except for cleanup.
Well, I think so. I think so.
Do they run water down there?
Well, they're waiting on Phillips 66 to come and look at it. And they're gonna possibly approve it to be branded Phillips 66. But we have to wait until everything's ready, and then they'll come and look at it.
Then they come and approve us. We haven't run water down there, have we? Had they just been phoning electric?
No, water, no.
Well, I seen they had a...there's a frock roof idling near the corner of that building. Looked to me like it...
We put water?
Possibly they might. No, I'm not sure. I think it was already there, but looked like they may have tied it in there or something, maybe...
As far as I know, you know, it was just electric and...
Phone.
And phone, uh-huh. It was a heck of a ditch. Dirt all across there. For the platinum level.
Yeah, David, I mean, if David thinks that's the best way to go...
Well, he says the first year, to be sure we've got it all put back together right. If we have any trouble that first year, then we'll be covered.
I think he would be probably more knowledgeable. It's been pretty important to get it all calibrated right and working right to get our money back out of the...
I mean, we've got to. And we've got to have it put back together. The guy that's looked at it last was the guy who took care of it in Springfield. So we're really more interested in him.
We need to make sure that David doesn't let somebody take it back apart again.
I'll say so, but we've talked about it. We just...and Jimmy...Jimmy Johnson are just really struggling getting everything, you know. Too many chiefs. And anyway, he was glad to get everything run out there, and then it wasn't his... But he and I talked about it, and we decided we're gonna have to have somebody certified in what they were doing, put that card reader in there. You've got fuel involved and different things, and we just...anyway, that's... I'll pass this over, and I'll tell you, it's not on here, but just to tell you a little bit. If you remember, and the planers only hadn't seen this either, but if you remember, we talked about Verizon coming in and putting a tower over Heath and Son. Do you remember us mentioning that or...
Not at all.
Well, of course, what I envisioned was one like they got south of town, you know. And it's in the flight pattern of our airport. And so we were trying to find ways to prevent a tower from being erected within the city limits. And I talked to this Mr. Cardinal. And he said, "Oh, no, no, no." He said, "That's not what we're wanting to do at all." 'Cause first, they told me they were gonna build a silo just like Dwight had. And put an antenna on top of it. That's what I thought they were gonna do. Well, the silo and the elevator together are 120 feet high. And then, you know...but they said the silo wouldn't support the tower. So what they wanted...they're gonna do that on one of Dwight's towers. Then they decided that they would build their own silo, which would do nothing but house their equipment. And so I just kept talking to him, trying to figure out what he was doing. "We're gonna build a fake silo on the very back, within 15 feet of the back of the property. And it will be...it won't quite be 120 feet high. It won't be as high as anything Dwight's got. And the antenna will be on the outside of this silo, directionally placed, but not any higher than the silo in order it'll be a..." And I went over and over and over that. I said, "Nothing higher than your silo." He said, "No." And I said, "Well, if that's the case, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with it." And then a man by the name of Brad Riggs came down today. And I went over it again with him. And he said, "No, no." He said, "What Mr. Cardinal told you is correct. The equipment will be inside this silo-shaped thing, and the antennas will not be above it. They'll be attached to the outside on whatever side they determine. And that'll be it. And it'll be on the back, 15 feet away from the back line." And I said, "Well..." "Will you have a drawing?" He said, "Oh, yeah." He said, "We're not gonna do it till next year." And I said, "Well, when you get your drawing, send the drawing, and we go to planning and zoning so that everybody knows what we're doing." They don't wanna spend the $30,000 or $40,000 to do that and then have us...
Shut them down.
Yeah.
What's the silo made out of?
Well, I assumed metal, but I didn't... But we'll know because they're gonna send us a diagram. And he just told me the truth. He said, "I'm down here to find out kinda what the atmosphere is and how you feel about what we're gonna do before we go ahead and even do the plans." And I said, "Well, if it's like you, tell me." I think you oughta go ahead and do the plans 'cause I don't think we'll object to anything. Do that hard today. You're gonna have to feed when you get home?
Uh, not feeding yet.
Not yet.
I gotta check a bunch of cows. I've lost four cows in 10 days on one of my farms. And then autopsies are gonna have results back yet. Something's out. I killed her.
Anyway, that's...this...this right here is the office. And right here is where the silo is. I've just got one of them, so you can look at that.
Pass it around.
Yeah, I mean, if it's...
It's gonna be higher than anything that's there.
Right. I mean, it's any higher than anything than Dwight's God, so I...
Or with wheels.
I wouldn't do that.
Dwight would be in fit. They're deep and big.
I mean, I know they're getting money for it being there. I would too.
He should have $500 or something for it.
Yeah.
I don't blame him.
Better than having a house set for him.
And if they're moving it way back, then it'll be out of Dwight's way. See?
At least they put it on.
Here's the office and this...
Where it's gonna be back to the property.
Okay. Thumb systems. Thumb systems are a little bit of a pig and a cow. But... CenturyLink and MediaCom were just pretty close to the same price. One was 921, and one's 906. And what they provided was about the same in terms of internet and phone bill and all that. Phone bill for CenturyLink was 3,000 minutes, which would more than cover it than what a phone bill would be at MediaCom. The difference between the two is the speed of the internet. And based on what Josh has told us, he...and Mr. Grinn told me this. Ours, for whatever it means, is supposed to be 10 over 10. So 10 being our upload, I guess. But he says we're only getting a tenth. We're only getting one and not 10. And I said, "Well, what are you using West Plaids?" He said, "CenturyLink." I said, "Well, what speed you got?" And he laughed. He said, "Just like you've got, one instead of 10." Even though the lady told me 10 over 10. Where the other one, MediaCom, is 100 or 105 over 10. So that's the difference in the speed. It's a lot faster. And he says, "For all the things we're gonna have hooked on," and he uses the MediaCom. The only problem I have with MediaCom is I'm kinda like...been my experience with them. Maybe... So my recommendation would be Grinn's at 173 a month. And that includes three years of free service, three-year warranty. Does not include the phone bill. So the phone bill, if you figured it at about 250, and internet at 299, although I didn't get that confirmed. But the guy at MediaCom told me that our internet would be 299, but I tried to get him to confirm that, but he's... It took MediaCom five weeks to get a proposal. Five weeks. So that comes in at a little over 700 or about 700. So we're still $200 under CenturyLink-MediaCom. Can I tell you it's just gonna be perfect and look wonderful? No, I can't. But I do have faith, and I like Mr. Grinn. No, I can't, but I, I do have faith and I like Mr. Grinnon and I checked, I checked several places that he, I talked to an IT guy who handles all of that, he worked for Century Bank, or Jeremy Hanaford did, and they've not had any trouble, they're pleased with.
Wasn't it Grinnon that, when we went to Houston, when that Grinnon had their.
Uh-huh. City Hall there, right? He's got, he's got City Hall in West Plains. That one in West Plains has got almost a hundred phones on it, that system, a big system. And I, I said to him, I said, now, if somebody's calling the park, they can, whatever it is, two five seven five or whatever the number is, they dial that, it will come through our system at City Hall and be routed to her. So let's say we have four lines coming in, she'll be using one of our lines, but when she's not talking to somebody on her line, we're using it. And the same thing would be true with City Utilities, four one two two number, if someone dials them directly, it comes through our system, but it only rings to City Utilities, we don't have to transfer that call. So we'll have, we'll have four, and we're probably, because we're paying, we're paying for community center and we wanna do that too, and put it in the same system. And people call those numbers, we won't, we won't have to answer it, but it'll all come through the same system.
Couple of months ago, we, we took a motion to accept CenturyLink bid and they, they bumped up the price instead of that bid quote was wrong and it was almost double what they had told them it would be. So if it would be okay tonight to just take another motion and cancel the first one, would that be all right?
Had, had we made a motion and approved it?
The CenturyLink.
We'll, we're gonna need to approve it. It started out at six ninety-three and went to twelve hundred and something and then got down to a thousand something and then it got down to nine twenty-one and that's, that's the best they could bear. Anyway.
Do we need to confirm the two ninety-nine from MediaCom before we do?
Well, I don't think so, Bernie, because the guy who told me that is the guy who wrote down the bid for MediaCom, Hal Green, and when I tried to find somebody to confirm that, they all referred me to Hal Green. And I was trying to go around him a little bit and see if I could get a confirmation from somebody else, but I couldn't. And I mean, we might, if it's more than that, we might have to do something, but I, he told me right off two ninety-nine. So I'll take him at his word.
But I guess some, somewhere down the line, we're gonna have to get some kind of confirmation off it.
Well, I mean, he'll call me.
There should be a contract or something. Yeah, we'll get a contract from him when we get ready to do that.
Oh, yeah, MediaCom?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he'll be waiting to have that contract with him. Yeah, just like we will with Mr. Grinnon.
Like a resolution with a contract, I stepped it that way we want it.
We, I, I had already kinda decided on Mr. Grinnon before I knew that the Herald Office is using the system. If I understood Keith right. You happy?
Yes.
Service?
Yes. It's what, three weeks into it so far.
He's a, he's just a really knowledgeable guy.
He was very thorough.
Yeah, and he's a nice guy and he instills confidence in you. I mean, he's, that's just the way he comes across, the way he came across to me. So what I'd like to do is I'd like, let's first make a motion to, to, to cancel the motion to, to deal with CenturyLink on the phone system, however you wanna write that. We, we need, we need to back, we need to cancel.
The motion from.
The motion to buy a phone system from CenturyLink, we need a motion for that.
You wrote it, I still make the motion.
It will need a second.
I'll second it.
Second, but lean all in favor. Now, I would like a motion to approve Grinnon's, please.
I'll make the motion to approve Grinnon's for the new phone system.
Motion, but Keith, need a second.
I'll second.
Second, but, Mr. Lofton, okay, all in favor? Okay, I will call the others tomorrow and let them know what we did. Let's see, where are we now? Yep, I need approval of the court docket.
I'll make a motion to approve the court docket for September eighteenth.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? I have a question about the court docket, not specifically, but I sat in on a thing, a little hourly thing called Up Max Street.
That doesn't apply to us.
Well, I, I know what it meant, but is it gonna change our warrants, we're not gonna change anything?
It did, we pulled, we pulled, we pulled the warrants on traffic where we had not sent show causes. I handled all that with Reggie and couldn't get the judge, but I just by having to pull them, so we're good, we're where we need to be.
Okay.
We got that all straightened out.
Okay.
And we don't have the percentage of city revenue that comes from municipal court if it's not so, it puts us in any.
I was wondering about the warrants if we.
No, we took care of that.
We took care of it, okay.
The date went to effect.
I want my motion to go in the closed if we're ready.
All right. Need a second.
I'll second it down.
Okay.